We are live on YouTube. Thank you, Sean. How's everyone doing today?
Good. How are you?
Good. Family is healthy. We're in a better spot than we were last week. Thank you all for proceeding without me last Monday. Much appreciated. All right, it's 5:15, so we will go ahead and get started. This is a work session. So today is Tuesday, January 19th, 2021, 5:15 PM. And this work session will be to discuss Phase Two of Lake Shore Boulevard. We've got some updates from city staff and from the project team, which includes a consultant. So I do call this meeting to order at 5:15 PM. We will go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to move this over to the flag so you can see it. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under power, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. And we will do a roll call. Usually for a work session, it's a little more informal. I'm trying to remember. City Clerk, did we do a formal roll call?
The last couple we have, it's whatever you want.
Let's go ahead and do that, especially because we're on Zoom to make it a little more clear who's here and who may be absent.
Sure. And just a quick reminder again, with the new Open Meetings Act regulations, just note, city and state you're in. I'm assuming Marquette. Commissioner Bonzal?
Here, the city of Marquette and the county of Marquette.
And Commissioner Davis?
I'm present in the city of Marquette and the county of Marquette.
Commissioner Hanley?
Present in the city of Marquette, county of Marquette.
Commissioner Mayor? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Mr. Stonehouse, I believe you're on mute.
I am present, city of Marquette and county of Marquette.
Mayor Protem Hill?
I am here, city of Marquette, county of Marquette.
And Mayor Smith?
Here, city of Marquette, county of Marquette. Just wanted to, I don't think we need to do a motion. We can't anyway. It's a work session, not an actual meeting, but just to note that Commissioner Mayor is absent due to business. He's got work, so. I do not have any announcements this evening. Brings us to public comment. I did see one come through. City Clerk, are you able to read that? And are there any others?
Yeah, I can, I can read that comment, and there are no others that I've received at the present. So the one, the one piece of written comment we had ahead of time was emailed from Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street in Marquette, and she writes, "Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, and members of the city commission, now that so much good work has been done moving the road away from the lake and two new parking lots have been established, I imagine there will be many more people on the beach and in the lake in front of where Cliff's Dull Chemical Company used to be. What plans does the city have to work with the state to remove the water intake pipe from the Cliff's Dull Chemical Company that sits on the lake bed and goes out 1,500 feet into Lake Superior?" There's a YouTube link embedded in the email that I believe went to the entire commission. Then she writes, "This pipe will be a hazard to any people using the lake in the newly opened up areas of the lakeshore. Respectfully submitted, Margaret Brum."
Thank you, City Clerk. That's all we had for public comment. Public comment is now closed. I will ask if we have a chance, maybe at the end of the presentation, if city staff could try to address that question. I would appreciate that very much, and we do have it in writing if we need to revisit that at a later time. All right, so we are on to our presentation by the project team on Phase Two of Lake Shore Boulevard. I believe I'm going to turn things over to Dennis. I see that he is on and ready to go. So we will go ahead and let the team run through their presentation, and then I will run through the commission with, you know, one by one with any questions or comments, and we'll kind of go from there. So go ahead, Dennis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, and good evening to the city commissioners. Thanks for this opportunity to be able to present the plans for Phase Two to you this evening. I'm going to go ahead and ask if Sean is in the room, if he can go ahead and authorize me to do a screen share, or if I should be able to do it myself. It looks like I can do it myself. So here we go. All right. Here we are with the wonderful presentation we have for you tonight. Of course, we always have some pretty pictures dialed up, but I'm going to talk very briefly this evening about what we would consider our history of getting here, okay? Now, as we move through this slide, I have the task tonight of reminding you where we started and getting you up to the point of where I can hand it off to another presenter that we have tonight. First, I'd like to introduce our project team that we have available tonight. On the city side, we have Mikhail Kipola, affectionately known as Mick, our city engineer, and Jim Compton, who is our city hydrology engineer. Those folks have been our go-to on this project all the way back to 2014, when I start talking about those dates, but they're the primary folks that designed a lot of the early stuff that we have, that we brought through commission approval, and have been working hand in hand with other members of our project team who we have present tonight, which we have. I believe Jerry Grant from Superior Watershed Partnership is on the line, as well as possibly Carl Lindquist, who is the Executive Director of Superior Watershed Partnership, who have helped us greatly with funding on these projects, as well as a project engineer from the consulting firm Baird. We have Matt with us this evening, and Matt is a principal with Baird, and they're very, very, very knowledgeable in coastal engineering. Matter of fact, that's primarily what they do, but I'm going to take you back a little bit in time. You know, I think there's no doubt that we can go way back to several city commissions and talk about the project need for Lake Shore Boulevard. We had over numerous occasions, we had to close the road for the winter time. It often ran into spring, started in the late fall, we'd get storms, a lot of damage over the course of time. The revetment that was in place just wasn't working for us anymore for what the community wanted, to keep Lake Shore Boulevard. So back in, I want to say about 2012, 2013, I could get the exact date, but we applied for coastal zone management planning grants in conjunction with the Superior Watershed Partnership, and we were successful in obtaining a planning grant to look at the challenges of the shoreline. And we were able to, at that time, acquire the services of Baird, and Matt can talk, Matt Clark can talk to the, talk a little bit about their background when it's, when it's his shot here, but they helped us go through a very robust community planning process for the lakeshore, and it involved a community survey, several community meetings, and many iterations of what should we do with Lake Shore Boulevard. That was the primary focus of it. After we had gone through several options with the community, the community chose their preferred option, and then we moved forward with successfully obtaining another coastal zone management grant. It was in 2014, the next funding cycle. And then we worked through the process, and I think actually some of these pictures that we see up here were, were through the actual public meetings that we had as we moved forward with a more advanced design that actually culminated in a, in a, what we would like to call kind of like a shovel-ready design for Lake Shore Boulevard itself. And then it had some schematic or program planning also involved with it for the lakeshore. Now, we break these projects into two parts. Phase One is Lake Shore Boulevard. As far as funding procurement on that, we worked through with FEMA to be able to have that project done under the guidance of our engineering department. I can't say enough good things about them. We hear good things about Lake Shore Boulevard. That's Phase One. That project is complete. That includes the road, the parking areas, and the bike path. Phase Two is what this meeting is about this evening. That was the further building upon the coastal zone management grant that we had for the road design. We had an identified need for more detailed planning on the lakeshore. We were successful again, thanks to our partners at Superior Watershed Partnership of obtaining some funding from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation, which we call NIFWIP. Through partnership with NIFWIP, we were able to again procure the services of Matt's team at Baird, and they went through a very, very detailed analysis of the shoreline, and this is, you know, dealing with depths, contours, waves, currents, all of the things that's way above and beyond the expertise of our in-house engineering staff, even though they're good at what they do. This is the stuff that requires specialists, and they've helped us greatly along the way. We have been working with Baird for quite some time now. I like to say that we've been working with Baird on this project since approximately 2014, and we have, because they've been helping our community through all of those numerous public meetings and helping us decide what Lake Shore Boulevard was going to look like in the future, as well as these new plans for the easternmost part of the shoreline. So without any further ado, I think what I'd like to do is I would like to turn it over to Matt Clark, who is the principal on the project from Baird, and have him walk you through the presentation, and I will sit here and move the slides for him.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, great. My name is Matthew Clark, and I'm with Baird and Associates. We're a coastal engineering firm, and we've been working in various locations on the Great Lakes for about, really, almost 40 years now. I've been with the company for just a little over 20. So I'll take you through the presentation. It's really, I think it's only about 12 slides, including the bookends, and it's really at a high level, but I'm certainly open for questions afterwards. So as, as the slide indicates, we like to go by project need and project purpose, mainly because that's what the regulators like to hear as well. So the project need is really more or less the existing conditions, and roughly you have, you know, up to 4,000 feet of public shoreline and a 18 to 20 acre site that's generally degraded. There's public infrastructure at risk and from coastal storm damage primarily, and really no safe waterfront access. I've walked that site three times, and, you know, for an able-bodied person, it would require work to get over those stones to actually enjoy the waterfront. So our project purpose is to really upgrade coastal resiliency, and we want to do this in a sort of forward-looking approach. We want to create a living shoreline. We want to protect Lake Shore Boulevard, and we want to provide a public green space that has waterfront access associated with it. Next slide, please. So the, the mats you see on your left is just a layout of the site. A couple key things to mention here. In the upper right, you see an arrow pointing to the Corps of Engineers Breakwater. That's very important because it, it does impact the coastal conditions at the site. And the other thing is the, is the cliff-dow groundwater plume that you see there outlined in the squiggly line there. That also is a, is a constraint for us. And on the right side, you see, let's see if I can minimize the report. Yeah. You see the coastal constraints, and we consider the site to be highly constrained. We've got seven constraints in the, in the diagram there. We want to, of course, start off with the coastal conditions. We've got to produce something that's very robust. We've, we've got funding from NIFWIP, so we have habitat goals that we need to move toward. There are the cliff-dow conditions associated with the site, things we can't do. We want to make sure we protect the roadway, of course. We want to stabilize the shoreline, and we really want to provide waterfront access, I mean, down to the water's edge, where they can literally put their finger in, put their toe in, whatever. And it was reviewed by the, the folks on the regulatory side in, in concept, and they, they generally gave the thumbs up. Also, we had, we had city and SWP input all along, and of course, we want to converge on a fairly economical solution as well. Next slide, please. Some of the, the supporting analysis that we've done here, we started off with field data collection, things like site reconnaissance and coring and surveying and things like that, went into wave modeling and water analysis. We got input from the Kivin Albanda Indian Community for plant species. We've had the eagle and the quor. Take a look at this. There's been city input, of course, all along. We've done some sediment transport assessments and hydraulic analysis of the overtopping for our solution, and we've also done a fair amount of coastal design, and then gone on to document all of that in a draft set of drawings and specifications, and also we're working on the report right now and recommendations. Next slide, please. So just focusing a little bit more on the technical aspects, what you see in the upper left is a diagram that shows two things. One is that, that white circle in the upper right of that, of the diagram is what's called a wave rose, and what that tells us is where, from where, the majority of-
Is there any way to zoom in? Because on my screen, that's really small. Is there a way to zoom in on the, so that one piece at a time?
Good question, Jen. Thank you for asking, Mr. Protem Hill, and thank you, Matt.
Sure. So what you see here is, is what's called the offshore wave rose, and to define the wave climate at the shoreline, we always have to start with an offshore wave rose, and then we model the wave transformation as it approaches the shoreline. But what the offshore wave rose tells us is that the, it's dominated primarily by waves from the northeast all the way through the northwest. There are waves coming from all different directions. It's just that they're, they're low energy. It's a low-energy situation there. This is why the federal breakwater that you see provides a lot of sheltering for the site. So when we look at the change in waves at the shoreline between the southern portion and all the way just north of Wright Street, we see almost a 40% reduction in the wave height, going from something like, I believe, a 20-year is 7.7 feet down to something like a 4.3 by the time you get to the area near Wright Street. Go ahead, Dennis, and move to the middle. There you go. So this is a run from one of our, our wave models, and it shows just what I was talking about, the, the sheltering effect of the breakwater, and that also, you can see a couple of things, is one is the, the little arrows there are really wave direction, but you can see the, the direction is bending in the sheltered area, and that plays, go back to the, to the other one, Dennis. There you go. And that creates movements along the shoreline, both north and both south. That's a very unusual phenomenon, but we do encounter it on occasion, but it's important to realize, and we have talked about that in our report regarding the impacts on sediment transport. And Dennis, can you go to the furthest one on the right then? Yeah, so we've also done, we've done drone surveys, and we've georeferenced them because we want to compare them with other aerial photography as far back as 1939 to see just how, how far the, the shoreline has eroded in various parts of the shoreline, both the southern end, the middle end, and, and in the north. And Dennis, can you go down to the bottom left? The coastlines and people document, Coral had me, SWP had me take a look at that, so, and we didn't use it as a guidance, but we did notice that there were four future perspectives they had. One was armoring, the other one was passive, another one was retreat, and the fourth one was, was green infrastructure, and we've, we've actually applied three of those approaches. The first is retreat. The road has been moved, relocated further inland. The second was green infrastructure. We've created a living shoreline. Then the third, excuse me. Third relates to, hold on. Is, is the passive approach where you've got a dune swale system in wetlands that can actually take a fair amount of, of impact and still be able to survive once the storms have passed. Next slide, please.
Sorry.
Right. So what you see here is a, is a plan view of the proposed solution, and that has a, a living revetment. That's a very, it's a shallow revetment, meaning it has a very shallow slope around six to one. It's comprised of four to eight-inch cobble-sized stone that comes from a quarry. Okay, this is much different than your conventional revetment, which is just large armor stone. And the key thing there is, we want to adopt a theme of it's integrated with the upland works, and what we mean by that is these hydraulic connections, there are controlled breaches in the revetment that allow water from Lake Superior at certain water levels to infiltrate and to nourish these wetlands that we're going to create. In addition, there's a pocket beach that provides very sheltered area. It will be wet in part of it. It'll be moist in other parts to attract birds and invertebrates, and also people will certainly be allowed down on there. On the upland side, as I mentioned with the wetlands, next to that and throughout really is a dune swale system where you have undulating, undulating landform. Part of it is a sand dune and the other is a swale, and that's to mimic the, the shoreline that was there before. On the south end, you have, we have dune repair, and we also have dune reconstruction. There's a series of trails all the way through the site to make sure people are engaged with, you know, engaged with the natural portions. There's an overlook. The trails are, some are accessible to handicap, and they connect to all the major features of the site. Next slide, please. So the, the living revetment looks like this. You can see it's very fine-grained, four to eight-inch size cobble, leading right into the, the dune swale system. It will be built, the, the dash line here is the existing structure, and here's the roadway behind it. It will be, this, any high points will be cleared, and the stone will be reused in other parts of the project, and there will be a 30-foot crest coming down to a six-to-one slope. It's a very gentle structure, and the stone size, four to eight inch, is, is small enough for an able-bodied person to actually walk on it. Trails in some locations will be adjacent to the revetment, and in other locations, they'll be near the revetment. In some locations also will have an overlook here, just for a higher view of the lake. Next slide, please. So if you ever wondered what these things look like in nature, it's important that we all realize that, you know, Lake Superior has more than 1,000 miles of coastline that is rocky. It's either bedrock, excuse me, outcrops, large builders, shingle, pebbles, or cobbles. Okay, so there's, there's a natural precedent right on Lake Superior, so what we're trying to do is simply mimic nature. And of those 1,000 miles, more than 100 are really related to shingles and cobbles and pebbles, so it's a good feature for interacting with the lake, and also people can access it. And I've shown three random photos I got off the web just to demonstrate that people can go up and down, they can get next to the water, and they can enjoy the views. This is something that really hasn't been available to this portion of the site for well over 50 years. Next slide, please. On the uplands, what we want to do is create, as I mentioned, the dune swale system, and the pictures on the right are examples of the, of the overall look and nature of the, of the parkland that we'd like for the project to take on. Key here are the sightlines from the road, the sightlines from the, the bike path. You will still be very clear. You'll have views of the lake. You'll have views of the dunes. Even people parked here in the parking lot next to the bike path, the, the views are generally unobstructed, and of course, people walking right next to the, to the living revetment will, will have really, a really nice view. Next slide, please. So just to close out, this is what we currently have. It's, again, it's a derelict shoreline for more than 3,000 feet. You can see a lot of damage to infrastructure here from overtopping and a shoreline that's really comprised of stone that's been placed randomly and not an engineered structure. So the, the parkland has, it's, it's still at risk. There's no way, there's no safe access to the, to the water's edge. That is, is all going to change with the, with the project. If you want to show the next slide. And this is post-construction, so we have our living revetment here on the right. We have dune grass. We have the trail for really getting in the parkland and experiencing it. We have a bike path near the gentleman, near the trees, and the roadway. The trails is roughly, I think about, they're about six feet wide, made with gravel material, which I think is, is low maintenance. They're low cost. There will be a portion of it that is paved, so people in wheelchairs can, can get out to enjoy the lake views as well. So that's, that's the project in a snapshot. Certainly willing to open up to questions. One thing I would like to mention, I probably should have mentioned it when I was talking about the coastal analysis, is that you know, climate change is on everyone's mind, and the Great Lakes are a, they are a unique system, and there's two aspects of climate change for this project. One is water levels, the other is waves. About 10 years ago, the, the thought, the predictions were that the, with warmer weather, there would be greater evaporation throughout the system, and which mean to be a slow, but very steady decline in the average lake level, something, I think it was over, well over half a foot to a foot, maybe even, even greater. That has now changed in the course of probably the last five years because the rate of evaporation on land was not as great as, as, as previously determined. Therefore, the, the conclusion now is that there, there will be a decline, but it will be very, very small, less than six inches for Lake Superior, up to six inches for Lake Michigan. And so the, the range, though, the swings, the changes between high periods, periods of high water and periods of low water will be much more rapid, and that's, I think that's what we've seen certainly on Lake Michigan and to a certain extent on Lake Superior. So the, the current six-month outlook is- So the the current six month outlook is by March, it will, the water level on Lake Superior will be roughly eight tenths of a foot above low water datum. Then that'll be its low point. And then it'll start increasing to one point four feet above low water datum by June. The five year outlook is for the mean water level to slowly decline toward this long term average, which is about point six feet above low water datum. For very long term, as I mentioned, the the impact on climate change for water levels, they think a a long term decrease, but it will be very small. And then for waves, the it's a slow but steady decline in the ice coverage. So during winter is when you get your, you tend to get your worst winds. And usually what we had previously was you had a large ice coverage on the lake, especially near the shoreline. So that protected most shorelines during the winter. That has now slowly but surely gone away. There have been two instances in the last ten years where you had significant ice cover. But mostly the other times, it's it's well below its its very long term average. So what to do with that? You know, there's a lot of uncertainty as we look out with climate change. So what we tend to do is we try to adopt what we term built in conservative measures. So for instance, the the four to eight inches that I mentioned on the living revetment, our model actually indicated that three to four would be stable enough. But we think that you really need to beef up the revetment because you really don't know for certain the the amount of change in the wave climate. The shore ice, we have not included that in our wave analysis. We've used a hundred year storm when determining the stability of the revetment. We've used a fifty year overtopping level when determining the crest of the revetment. So we've really adapted a an adaptive management solution. We've moved the road, we've raised it, we've created wetlands to receive the water if it does come over. And we've created drainage paths back to the lake. We've had dunes and wetlands which are very flexible in nature. They can take a beating and keep on functioning. And we're, we're going to recommend monitoring the shoreline for at least the first three years. These are very inexpensive surveys that can be done quite quickly to help build up a a a library of performance to help us understand how the the system is reacting. So with that, I'll, I'll pause and open it up for discussion.
Thank you very much, Matt. Nice presentation and certainly a lot of information for us to process through here. So be a little patient with us. Dennis, do we have anything else from staff or the team before we move into some questions and discussion?
If you want, I can answer the public comment question right now and get that out of the way.
That would be helpful. And and I think if you could maybe just broadly talk about timelines and next steps, because I'm sure that will be a question of many commissioners, just to kind of have that in mind as we discuss, you know, whatever questions we have.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Thank you. You know, in the public comment, I believe the question was the residual pipe that's out in Lake Superior. What is going to be the status of that if there's going to be people closer to the water? That's a great question because it helps me lead in to a short discussion I'd like to have this evening about the actual role of Eagle or what we know as M D Q in the project. So Eagle is very aware of the pipe that is out to the lake. The pipe that is out in that lake right now is the responsibility of the former Dow operation. Eagle has been monitoring it. I actually have a really cool video if ever anyone would ever be interested where they went and went underwater with a submarine and took pictures of the pipe and assessed its condition to make sure it wasn't leaking and so on and so forth. But that is an Eagle jurisdictional issue. And as I understand, the last conversations that we had with Eagles that they will be speaking with Cliff Dow about the removal of that pipe. But again, that's kind of a proprietary issue with Eagle and Dow. So as I get information on it, I can most certainly pass it along. But I do know they are aware of it. They are working on it and working to get it removed. How that plays out between the two of them, we wouldn't be privy to that information. But it does also what I'd like to, it allows me to kind of add to the presentation as well that not only was this project team involved, but our current Cliff Dow project team that we have of Tri Media Consulting, myself and staff, as well as Rich Baron from Foley Baron, who is our legal counsel on the site. We've worked hand in hand on this project and everything that is presented this evening has been vetted by the Cliff Dow project team to make sure of, you know, ensure of the maximum safety for the community and others that would be using this. So thank you for that opportunity. As far as timelines go on this project, we are looking to move forward with this in the coming year. Now, one of the things that we have to as we move through this design is, as recently as today, Matt was really helpful and helped us find a hundred thousand dollars to cut out a bit too. So we can finalize those financial numbers. And once we have that, then we would move forward working with Gary Simpson and and Mike Angeli to program that through the capital improvements plan and then begin construction on that. Now, we have, we have another grant in play on this project and that's what we call the Brick Grant through FEMA. And again, Carl and his crew at SWP have been very helpful. We did just submit that grant today. That grant award, if we were successful, wouldn't be until the fall fiscal year. So, you know, anything related to that would be a little bit later in the summer. But as we narrow this down on financing, we will get with Gary and make sure the appropriate bond bond issue and necessary things that need to be done with the capital improvements plan would allow us to move forward on this.
Okay, can I ask one more detailed question about the timeline before I open it up? So are we, obviously, we're having this work session. It sounds like the the report is still in progress, which we will see at some point, I'm assuming, with the recommendations and the finances. And then if that all comes together in the coming months, is this something that the commission would be I mean, obviously, we're going to look at, you know, reviewing and approving it. But is that for this summer, this construction season?
Absolutely. Yes, Madam Mayor, absolutely. This is something that we would look to get started on. We have through the assistance of Barrett and our and our engineers on the site, they are working through the bid documents as we speak and putting those packages together so that we can present them forward as a whole.
That's what I needed just timeline wise to make sure. And we, it's been a little while since we've talked about it. So, all right. I will run through the the commission here for any questions, comments. We'll each have a chance to talk and then I will open it back up briefly at the end if anyone has any, you know, follow up questions from the commission because this is a dynamic and important topic. We will start with Commissioner Stonehouse and then we'll go in alphabetical from there as I've been trying to follow my my rotating alphabet here.
Ma'am, I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to everybody who's been involved with this. I think that we got a lot of really great details about this this project tonight and plans, what it'll look like. And I also appreciate the update on the timeline, Dennis. So first of all, I guess a couple of, one thing I wanted to flag, I suppose, is a concern that I have is accessibility. So I know that I'm currently in our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We, you know, we have some projects, capital plan, our five year capital plan for our Parks and Rec system where we want to install some infrastructure to allow people with limited mobility to access the water itself along our public shoreline and our public beaches. So I guess I would just, I would like to see some some kind of planning. Perhaps there's our, that's already a discussion that's been in place, but I'd like to see some kind of planning to make sure that the water itself will be accessible in these locations. Another question that I had, so I, as I was doing some research, I attended a couple couple of webinars and things like that in recent months. And one concern that that I had about the project coming into this meeting was that, you know, there's been a lot of research been done by like by researchers at places like University of Michigan, Michigan Tech, Eagle. When you've got the larger lakeshore armoring, you know, the big boulders, the large rip rap, that there can be issues with reflection of waves and thus reflection of sediment off of that lakeshore armoring, which in the long run can actually be, you know, sort of re farmed to the natural sand beach and prevent sand from re accumulating. Actually contribute to the erosion of sand beaches. So I was just curious if that's still going to be a potential concern with this smaller cobble beach with the four to eight inch particles.
Hey, Matt, I think you might be on mute, but I I'm not sure. It it doesn't show you're on mute on my screen. So.
Okay, I have two mute buttons. Sorry about that.
You threw me there.
Actually, the the process that you just described has occurred because of the stone size and the steepness of the current slope. The water depths in front of that revetment have indeed deepened. And the, I guess the advantage is that the the living revetment at a much shallower slope is going to have a lot lower reflection coefficient. So it's not going to exacerbate the problem.
Great, thank you. That's really good to know. Initially, I think some of the initial draw, concept draw that we had seen showed some of that, that stone revetment, and that was where my concern was coming from. So I'm really glad to learn that if anything, this cobble beach, this cobble shoreline can actually help.
Yes, and we we do have video of cobble versus conventional revetment. And if, you know, if I'm up there, maybe I could drop by and just show it to you. And it's it's a distinct change in wave dynamics with a conventional revetment versus cobble. It's almost as if in a cobble, the wave just disappears versus a revetment, a conventional revetment, you'll see a lot of reflection, a lot of overtopping.
Sure. No, thanks. That makes sense. I appreciate that. The the other question I, you know, I think earlier on the presentation, we noted that there was consultation with the KIWANAPAY Indian Community, which I think it's great to talk to KVIC. I think it's very important. Was there a, did we, did we not consult with the St. Marie Drive? If not, is there a reason for that? Or I'm just curious.
I defer to Carl on that.
Mainly that we're in the treaty area of KVIC and we do a lot of work with KVIC, but that's the main reason is their treaty area.
Okay, thank you. So the, this is really a question, but just something I did want to bring up. How I kind of, the last thing I want to talk about tonight, I suppose. So it's an idea that I I've kind of proposed in the past, which I think that the commission should seriously consider as we move forward with this project in twenty twenty one and and the following year, I think is the idea of taking the land east of the new Lakeshore Boulevard and placing that into a permanent recreation and conservation easement, sort of similar to what we did with a portion of the Hartwood Forest. I think that that would have a lot of public support. Many members of the public would appreciate that land being preserved for public use and for conservation. And I think that it would be a really great long term commitment that the city could make to lakeshore preservation. So just something I want to throw out there into the into the hopper that hopefully will happen at some point in the next year or two.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel. Commissioner Davis.
Yes. First of all, Matt, thank you very much for all that information. I was, you know, there was a lot given to us and it was, it's really helpful to understand the project to this depth. And don't go away after this project because we still have Presque Isle to deal with and the the Lakeshore Boulevard closer to Lakeview Arena. So thank you for all of your expertise. I think you'll be working with us for a while. Carl, thank you for your organization's involvement in all of this. And, you know, I remember your organization way years back and how you've grown and how you've helped the city is is really phenomenal. So thank you and all of that grantsmanship that you're doing to help us bring in the resources. So I just want to make sure I I heard correctly with how the the design will go. And I guess this is a Matt question. We have the road, then we have the bike path, and then we also have the trails that will go through some of the the newer things. And and then we have our cobblestone.
Yes, that's, that's the way we're, and then at one end of the southern, you have that that small pocket beach. That's all part of the system as well. That's correct.
Okay, so when I walk that, and I walk that a lot, like a lot of people, and I see these big red and yellow kind of monitoring things coming up out of the ground, what happens with those? And, you know, tell, give us a little information about why they're there, what you're finding with them and and what will happen to them as we move forward next summer.
Those, those are what's called monitoring wells. And there, I believe they're monitoring the status of the the groundwater plume. And we have to work around them. And I think what we're going to receive from Tri Media is a detail or maybe they're going to take it upon themselves on how they need to be protected during construction. So is is Jim or Mick here? Could you comment? Or Dennis, could you comment on the well, monitoring wells?
I'd be happy to to address that. There are several wells that are in place that we now are able to see because of the relocation of the road and and everything is kind of opened up what the former Dow site was there. So we have these, what we call them nested wells for groundwater monitoring. Some of those are going to go away. Some of them have to stay, the ones that are close to the plume, because we continue to monitor those and do testing and and whatnot in our discussions with Eagle on how to make that site safer for the public. So some of those will stay. Tri Media is working on a plan for relocation of some, abandonment of others, and then protection for the ones that that have to stay. But more than likely, what you're going to see out there is a reduction in the number of them. And then the ones that have to remain, we have to come up with projection, protection for them for construction. And I I also think what you're kind of getting at here is making them looking a little bit more aesthetically pleasing than what they are. And that's certainly something that I'm duly noting. So we'll be happy to look at that.
Well, I wasn't too concerned about the aesthetics, but now that you bring it up, that's a great idea. I am wondering about the different colors and what they mean. Are they red and yellow, if I can remember correctly?
It's purely, it's purely an identification system for Tri Media. I don't know what each color means, but it doesn't mean one is better than the other one in terms of environmental analysis. All it means is that one is shallow, one is halfway down and one is all the way down. And that's how they identify them. And then, of course, a lot of it has to do with the fact of whatever color pipe they have when they put it in the ground.
Okay. I think that's, that's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hanley.
I just want to thank you guys for the wonderful presentation. It was very informative, but I have no questions at this time.
Okay, great. And Mayor Protime House. I think you're on mute, Bill.
Could you bring the screen share back up, please? I have some questions about the water and about the revetment. And while we're waiting for that.
I just said it looks like he's working on it. Go ahead.
Well, we work on, well, that's getting done. I just want to go back. The goals of the project are um improving coastal residency by creating living shoreline, protecting the roadway and bike path, and creating green space with waterfront access, right? That's what's driving all the decisions. Looking for confirmation of that.
Correct, correct.
And um so I think those are really valuable goals. And I appreciate that what we're trying to do is meet some big targets with unlimited pot of funds um in an unpredictable situation. So if you want to go down to um the Living Shoreline Plan View?
That one?
Uh no, it says, it's titled, it, it, um. It's titled Living. Nope. That one, that one, yeah. So um what's the black line out in the water? There's a dotted line and then there's black lines?
Yeah, the, the black line out in the water is simply the limits of the revetment. The um, the dash line, I believe, is slightly beyond that limit. And that is the line that's being defined as the bottomland's conveyance that's needed for the permit.
And so what is, what does a bottomland's conveyance mean?
So when, when you cover part of the lake bed, um I think it has to, Jim, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, it, it has to be conveyed to the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's more or less the state giving us permission to place something on the bottomlands.
Okay. And so basically, we're buying a lot of rock and we're going to lay it down on the shoreline in a careful way so that it will stay and not cause more damage.
So it will stay and um absorb the incoming waves to reduce the risk of coastal flooding.
Okay. Um so, and then there's going to be a carve-out with a beach. And then I see at the very end, there's um, and that was, I guess, the, the white on the edge there.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's a good point.
Perpendicular and the rest are horizontal.
That's right. So um go back to the pocket beach. So the, the ones that are running parallel to the shoreline, those white lines, those are control structures to control the stability and the amount of wave action that gets in the pocket beach. Okay? At the end of the revetment, that's essentially a barrier between um city property and NMU property, between the, the cobble beach and the sand beach. And it's out there, um we're trying right now to actually rationalize the size because I think it can get smaller, which means we can save a bit of money. But that's, that's really its purpose is just as, as a separator.
And that's, there are trees there now? Are those all going to come out?
Now, there are ninety trees that are currently there on that site, and they're all going to stay.
As much, well, some of them are coming out, whether we make it or not right now, but um that's good. So I, I guess I'm trying to understand what we're going to experience here and um. So that white space you're saying is a controlled, control structure? That I think relates to, it looked like there's basically going to be a mound of rocks?
Yeah, but it'll be at the same slope as the revetment. It's just, they're just slightly larger to, to literally contain that end of um the shoreline. That's all.
And, and so I think just to, like if we're talking to the public, we're putting in a rocky, a small rocky beach so that it will be protected from the damage that comes from uh the waves.
Yeah, the beach is, is, it's like threefold. One, it, it protects the shoreline from erosion. It reduces overtopping and then provides an access method, can access way to get down to the water's edge.
Um what happened? There's an outflow there? Is that the beach? Or it seems like it's closer to where the barrier is between NMU and our property.
There is a discharge pipe that will still be operating. It's right at the end of the city property, right next to that structure.
So where the blue?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Um and then, so the question then of beyond Pine Street, that's outside the scope of this project?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the um, the yellow then, what is the yellow? And is that the actual active wetlands, like wet wetlands?
Uh the, the blue are the wetlands. The green is um, I forgot the, the actual, the Latin term, but it has something to do with the uh, the dune swale system. The green and the yellow are the dune swale system. The, the light green, the dark green, and the yellow are all part of the dune swale system.
Got it. Um and then could you go the, uh, thank you, this is um helpful. The, so I'm not, I guess the, the lines that are perpendicular, the black lines that are perpendicular, are there going to be like, what, what are those?
That's, that's good questions. Um when, so this is part of our, you know, additional conservatism that we're building in, frankly, because of the uh, the uncertainty with climate change. So every five hundred feet or so, we're going to have a, a larger size stone than four to eight. And that's really to anchor that section of the beach. And it'll be something like eight to twelve, eight to sixteen. And that, that's all that is. So it differentiates between the pure gray, which is really four to eights, and the uh, the eight to twelve. That's all.
Okay. Have you built similar structures in other parts of the Great Lakes?
Yeah, we've built five of them in uh, in Lake Ontario. And we're looking at building at least one to two in Lake Michigan. And we've also built a very large reef in Lake Ontario uh that was actually just finished about eighteen months ago. It's performing quite well. Similar sized stone, not, oh excuse me, not four to eight, probably like eight to twelve, but similar size, you know, small and not the large armor stone.
Um we had heard at different times about the, the ability, if we created some kind of um underwater uh way to absorb the wave action further offshore. Um basically creating a reef structure, you made me think of that. Is there, is there no value in doing that here?
Oh, I, I, well, it, there's a couple of things. The, the bottomland impacts are going to be much greater because the, since it's underwater, um you need to make it wide. Because if it's wide and underwater, it, the, the friction from that surface is what will dissipate the wave energy. Okay, but since it's wide, you have a much greater bottomlands impact. And also, uh your cost is going to go up because the volume of stone increases quite a bit.
So you're saying it's not cost-effective, I think?
It's not. It's actually a very beautiful solution, to be honest with you. Because now, if you had, you know, if you could do that, you could actually create a, you know, a, just a nicer beach, to be honest with you. But it's, 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 and it's not cost-effective by a little bit. It's, it's not cost-effective by a lot. You know, if I was Bill Gates, I would, I, I'd build it, but I, you know, it's, it's fairly expensive.
Got it.
Matt?
Yeah.
Do you want to comment? In addition to cost, that the state and federal regulators said they were not in favor of offshore structures?
That's right. And that's, they, it was primarily focused on the, the bottomland impact. It is such a, it is such a wide footprint on the lake bed. It's essentially a taking of the lake bed for uh, for the city. Okay, and Eagle, we actually, we talked to Eagle about that. And you know, they didn't come out and say, "You shall not do this." What they said was, "This is going to be really complicated if you guys want to have a permit." So I took that as code for, you know, it won't even get out of the starting gate.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've had that experience here uh in another part of the harbor. Um Ken, uh this is great. Thank you so much. Can you go to the very next, uh the one that shows the um people walking?
Yeah.
Well, this one, well, yeah, uh, let's stay here. So um, the anticipation is that in fact, the water is going to be above, of like the bottom, what, twenty percent of what we're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is an idealized version, but it's something like that, you know?
So um, the uh, the um, we're like smooth, smoothing these stones across. And then there'll be places where there's bigger stones every five hundred feet.
That's right.
Um will there be any other structures? Or is it literally going to be three thousand feet of stone?
It's, it's three thousand feet of stone. Uh you got the pocket beach interrupting things on the south side. You've got the controlled breaches on the north side, which introduce water into the interior wetlands.
Gotcha. Okay, and then um, sorry, I'm writing stuff down. Uh the next picture, please? Is the one that um, there's one uh where you can see the green and the trees?
Yeah.
Not this one. That one. So I just uh hi, um highlighting how there is going to be sort of an elevation and not a, I mean, there's a, that's what appears in this image, and I wanted to clarify. It's a little tough to tell, you know, it looks like the stones are as tall as the people. Am I, am I looking at that correctly?
You mean, you mean the crest? Yeah, I think.
Correct.
When, when you do renderings like that, it's really hard to get all the geometry correct. So if.
Right, right.
If I had to, if I could command the stones, I would drop them down to about, you know, that guy's um knee.
Okay.
You know, but you, you're right. It's, it's a little out of whack. It, it just takes a long time to do renderings.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I just, if um these were share, you know, sharing this information, this starts to set expectations.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know.
Um that, so the, these, honestly, that's pretty close to what we've been looking at for the last twenty years is, you know, six foot or higher piles of rock. And that's not what we're going to end up with. We're going to end up with lower piles of rock.
Yeah, yeah, but they'll, they'll be organized, which is good. So it'll stay there. Um it, it will reduce overtopping. And also, I just wanted also to add that it does provide some aquatic structure. And we were advised by, I think, DNR to make sure we don't use limestone because that um discourages uh the, the colonization of the stone uh by plankton. And plankton are the, you know, part of the, the bottom of the food chain, really important to it. So we're, we're just very careful and we, we're creating aquatic structure. We want to make sure that um we don't use limestone. Try to use granite, provided that the price comes in on time or on, on budgets. And um, you know, it's, it's a lot of benefits to that. I, I do realize, um, you know, one of our ecologists on the project, that's the first thing he remarked. He said, "Boy, that is, that's a, that's a consistent cross-section for a long distance." And I, I, I said, "Well, you know, i- it is, but it's, it's going to, it's a market improvement over what's there now." And it actually, in my opinion, is going to provide a uh, a better aquatic structure for the, for the folks living below the water.
Yeah, yeah. And, and then I, here's my, um rockhounds being what they are.
Mm-hmm.
Um I think we might have to put up signs to not take the rocks home. Uh and, 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 because I even, I, I was talking to someone and they, we joked that um everyone in town probably has enough rocks that we could all bring them out to the beach and actually like make a substantial difference to the.
Yes.
I know, I easily could put fifty stones down with all the stones picked up over time. So um in your experience of having made these before, have you ever had concerns about the stones not, not lasting, not being there?
Um in terms of people removing them?
Well, and, and the water. And the water too.
No, so i- in terms of, in terms of stability, um we, normal uh profiles like the living revetment, they'll build up a small berm. That, that's just their nature. That's, that's what nature tells them to do, and that's what happens. They'll build up a small berm in some places of maybe a foot. Um if you're looking at a stone wandering three thousand feet down the shoreline, that will not happen. Okay, but if you're looking at people taking stones, I tell you, if they're interesting and pretty stones, people will take them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've experienced that up in Toronto. Um, you know, and some of our stones were brick, but since they turned over in a matter of two or three years, you know, through the waves, they became these beautiful red-colored stones.
Yeah.
And people were just taken by them, you know, and decided to take some souvenirs. So that, that is a possibility. I, I just think we probably develop a culture. There's a lot of stone already on the beach uh that, that does get picked up, I noticed when I was up there.
Yeah, I think the rules should be if you take one, you have to leave one. How about that? That's a goal. Okay, um I think, um I, I think it's been a long way to get to this point where this industrial site is being returned to uh some semblance of natural, and that's really to be applauded. Um I think uh the other thing about this is it seems like it's simple enough that if we do need to make adjustments over time, given climate change, what, what would be like an option over time? Or will, uh to, you say how the flexibility is, what might come from putting this in, say, five or ten years from now?
So, you know, I guess what we're going to do is we're, we're going to recommend you need to monitor this. So you need to do surveys. You need to do surveys. I think I had, you get an ASBIL survey at the end of construction, and you're going to do a survey every year at the same time because you want to understand the profile of it. Is it adjusting? Is it stabilizing, you know, what's happening? And then there may be, you know, as I mentioned, a, a small berm is going to form and that's not going to um weaken the structure. In fact, it may do something to reduce overtopping even more, so that would help. I, I can't see a lot of things going wrong here. There may be a need, occasional need to dress up the, the very edge of the crest as it meets the dune. Because the dune may, you know, may be experiencing some overtopping during really extreme events. But that would just be a walkthrough. You'd probably want to do a walkthrough once a year, twice a year, just to, to see what's going on there.
Um and then last question. Seems like we had a couple of storms, particularly the big, um, the really big storm in eighteen actually came more from the east than the northwest. Uh and um, and we have had waves from east as well. Like now that they're getting bigger hurricanes, it seems like we're getting more eastern uh exposure. And so what, um that the wave action, as you said, comes from lots of different directions. And how is that taken into account? Or is that, I, I definitely seen that in the area down by, by the um arena. That's where the damage came from. These eastern, eastern storms just ate that beach in a night. And so what, I, can you comment on that and on, on this? I understand you can't come up with that area, but on this area up here?
The, well, our data still tells us that it's really, it is dominated by northern waves. In fact, we went, we went back to the um, to that storm. And I think that was one of our uh design storms. And I think that was one of our, um, design storms we looked at for the, for this revetment. And my, my designer had indicated it was his, his review and of stability, uh, included, I think, a upwards to 100 years event. And, and normally, um, what we see here is a combination of maybe a 10-year water level, 20-year wave or 20-year water level, 10-year wave. Um, but we decided to get fairly conservative on this just because, you know, this is a large stretch. Um, it's a cobble beach and, uh, climate changes is sitting out there and it's, it's a lot of uncertainty associated with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a few questions. So, um, one, you, you mentioned the beach. Can you pull that image up? Sorry, Dennis, I know you just closed it out, but, um, wondering how big that beach will be. I know we talked about that back when we looked at phase one. Um, if that's just kind of a tiny little area?
Oh, oh, the pocket beach?
Yeah, the pocket beach.
Okay, so it's, it's anomaly, it's 250 feet long. I think it's about nine, 90 feet at its deepest.
Okay, I'm trying to visualize that, but so it's a it's smaller than a football field?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is.
So it's a tiny
And it's also below the level of the, uh, the dune swell. So it's, it's, it's fairly protected and it was, and that was intentional.
And how do you get to that beach? By, by a footpath, like a trail?
Yeah, that, see the black line leading up to it, uh, the trail right, and that, that goes, you can walk right down into it.
And that, that's a parking area that it's coming from?
Yeah.
Oh, so you park there, you walk down. And is that accessible by a, a handicap accessibility?
Um, well, it's, it's, it's compacted gravel right now.
Okay. Something we might want to consider. Not saying that we do, but just keep it in mind. Um, you had mentioned in, uh, the, a lot of scientific terms and thank you. You instill a lot of confidence in me that you know what you're talking about because wow, this is fascinating. But, um, looking forward to reading the report and hearing the recommendations. You said something about the impacts on sediment transport are both north and south. So that sediment transport, you mean sand and, and big rock, right?
Oh, what, what I really mean is that current is, um, there's a divergence point in the current. It moves north from one point and also moves south. So the, that beach, the majority of the beach south of the revetment has, uh, sediment that is moving south. And a little portion of that is actually moving to the north. That's part of the reason why the, um, the area, the N M U beach is, is eroding because that is moving to the north. And it's, that sediment, uh, is struggling to get all the way to the Clark-Lambro's beach because of the deeper water that was created by the, you know, the, the reflective surface of the, of the large armor stone.
Fascinating. Okay. What I'm curious about, and this, this is probably a silly question, but the wave is going to move these little rocks, right? But, but it's not very far?
It, it's, it's, it's less than, less than two feet and
Okay, I, I mean, yeah, so that's what I'm wondering, right?
It's, it's not going to move along the shore.
Kind of kind of juggle them kind of right where they are, but they don't get carried down somewhere else. I know that seems like a silly question, I just wanted to make sure.
That, that question was asked by the regulators and he, he said, make, make sure you address it in your report. So
Thank you, okay.
Yep. And the, I guess the other, go ahead.
Go ahead, Matt, sorry. You go ahead.
Well, the other thing, as, as you proceed north, that is such a sheltered environment that I don't know if the rocks are going to move at all because of the, that core engineer's break walls provides so much shelter.
So, okay, thank you. Um, and you had mentioned that you've done a few of these in, on Lake Ontario, um, and you're working on maybe a couple on Lake Michigan. Can you provide the names of cities so that I could look them up later, just for one or two even? I'm just curious. I kind of want to see pictures of what this looks like in other communities, if you're willing to share.
Yeah, it, this would probably, the five that were on Lake Ontario, probably within the Toronto area. They're, they're not as long as this, but I think some are, you know, some are at least a decade old. So there's, there's a, there's a history of performance.
So what would I, I would need to look up? Would I be able to, is there a certain beach name I could plug in or something?
I, I can get that for you. I'll send it off to, uh, to Mick and Dennis.
I just would like to kind of see what that looks like in real life elsewhere. Um, I had one follow-up question and I think I lost it. Um, anyway, thank you. Oh, I know, this presentation, if you could also send this out to the commission and, um, if we can make this available to the public on our website, that would also be helpful. Sean is nodding his head. Um,
Okay, do you, do you, out of curiosity, the, that, the slide with, uh, the natural cobble beaches, it did have people on it. I actually, I just pulled those off the web. Is that a concern to the city?
I don't know, should it be? Mike and Sean are saying they don't think so.
Okay, all right.
We will go ahead and get that posted for the, um, public to see. Um, okay, those are my questions. I want to just give a quick opportunity if commissioners have any, um, pressing follow-up questions that were not answered yet. And then, um, we will go ahead and wrap things up. Uh, Mayor Protem, hell, anything quick to ask?
Yeah, thank you. Um, where does the sand come from? Uh, is it still being replenished or I assumed that it came down the dead and, and it's no longer, we no longer have a replenishment? And then, um, and, and I heard you say it's moving basically from picnic rocks towards Lambros Park, correct?
No, no, it, it's, it's, if you can go back to that diagram, Dennis. So it's, what it's doing is the, the current changes, um, around that point. There, there's no exact spot. But any sand that's in that area, most of it is going to move south towards picnic rocks and probably beyond it, further south. There will be a, a some that moves to the north, but it will likely, um, not get very far because of the deeper water. And the sand source is actually the beach that's currently there.
The beach at Clift House? There's no beach there.
No, 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 no. I, i- i- if you look at, see where it says Reach A, that's essentially Pine Street to the south.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Or just, just north of Pine Street to the south, I should say.
Yep, yep. Right, so that sand is all, is actually moving towards picnic rocks. Okay. Well, that's, I'm really curious what's happening to that place. Uh, go ahead.
There is some that's moving to the north. Um, you'll see that in our report. The, the material that's at the Dead River, uh, since it's a really low energy zone, it just more or less hangs around in that same spot that comes out of the Dead River.
Okay. So the break wall is creating a split in the way the sand
Essentially, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'll, I'll read the report and have more questions.
Okay.
All right, anything else, Commissioner? Well, I wanted to thank the project team. Oh, did you have something, Commissioner Shonah?
Just a minute. I, I just wanted to thank, uh, thank Matt for his very imaginative solution to a very longstanding problem for the city. And certainly it's a great way to, uh, to build our coastal resiliency with a living lakeshore. And that's a whole different concept than I think that people normally think of. And certainly adding to our green space with, uh, with waterfront access is, uh, is just terrific. I would, uh, point out that Commissioner Bonzell's idea of putting this particular piece of property or maybe even extending that a bit, uh, into some sort of public trust or, uh, the nature conservatory area, even into that, uh, city park is a great one and it's actually one we've been kicking around for about 10 years. So nothing's new in the world, but good idea. But I would suggest that we consider doing it formally at the point that this project finishes. And then that can be part of any dedication ceremony we would have. So thank you for your time. Great job, Matt.
Thank you. It's, it's a great project to be associated with.
And I just wanted to echo those kudos. Um, I, you know, as we went through this project and we, we approved phase one, we all kind of knew phase two is coming and what it might look like, but I think you've exceeded at least my expectations with how it will look and feel to the community. Um, I think a lot of our, our folks here are familiar with these cobblestone type beaches and maybe an adjustment for some, but as you mentioned, um, for years, we have not been able to access the, the beach or the, the coastal shoreline there. And this is a, a big improvement and, um, I'm looking forward to, you know, learning more, learning about the cost. That's a big question mark in my mind and the grants and I'm hopeful that we get creative. And I know that our city staff is working hard on that, but, um, I certainly appreciate the work that you and the team has done. So thank you, city staff. Thank you to Matt.
Thank you.
And, um, I think that, I think that we are, um, all set for tonight and look forward to hearing more. Um, I will go ahead now and open things back up for public comment if we have any members of the public wishing to address, uh, us at this work session here. We don't have anyone on and we don't have any written for the second public comment session. No, okay, public comment is now closed. So we will go ahead and adjourn this work session at 6:35 PM. Thanks, everyone. Really appreciate your work.